Regular meeting for August twentieth at seven P M. The order would everyone be subscribed to the patient given by Sarah Lucino, I'd like to pledge allegiance.
Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we undertake the business of the city of East Point. As we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us, help us to lead our community with patience, tolerance, and understanding. We ask that you direct us to do what is best for all of our relatives. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose rule we live, in whose law we serve.
All right, thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Feinfeldt here. Councilperson DeMonico.
Here.
Councilperson Lucido.
Here.
Councilperson Owens.
Here.
And Mayor Pacey is absent.
Moving on to item two, approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion?
Sounds like you didn't want to add your item number?
No, I thought it was, all right, we're going to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. DeMonico, supported by Ms. Owens. Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Feinfeldt.
Yes, with the agenda approved, moving on to item three, hearing of the public. Would anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Rich?
Oh, no, they can change your name.
It's okay.
Oh, you're okay? I'm hardly pretty president of East Point. I'll tell you, I didn't really come down here to cause a disturbance, but maybe I might have by the end of this little presentation. Reading the last, the last paper, I seen somebody was really fighting for the parks. You know, this has something new. I've been fighting for the parks. I want something old. I want to bring it back like we had before. I want the shuffleboard. I want the horseshoes. I want what we had before, too. Right now, I've been fighting for two years just to get back what we had, not to see what we're going to get. I don't understand this anymore. I presented this for the last two years. And Monica, please, this is no offense to you. I see, I see where you're going with this.
Mommy.
I'm sorry, mommy. I apologize, mommy. But I, I understand where you're going with it, but what happened to what we had? Two years. I've been working on this. And I still, as I said, I still haven't got the candidates for, for the horseshoes and for everything. I don't understand. I'm not here to, as I say, I come down, the first thing I did was went to Parks and Rec. And what'd they do? They kicked me out. They said, you got to right here. We're leasing this. You don't belong here. If I come to see Joe, Joe's busy. I can't talk to Joe. I don't know who to talk to anymore. As I said, this is about the third time I presented myself as city council. And then I say, I go, yet I go to these meetings and go other places, and yet everybody's talking about the parks. Everybody wants to bring up the parks now. What happened in the past? You know, this is, this is nothing new. This is something I've been talking about for at least two years. And I said, it seems to me the same thing about, I went by today. I just come down through here. The schools finally put the playgrounds or start putting playgrounds back together. I talked about it all summer to get it done, but they said there's no, you know, cooperation or the rest of this stuff. The parks own the parks. The schools own the schools. It's everything to get. This is a city. How long have I been fighting for it? I don't understand this anymore, people. As I say, it seems like right now, now everybody's fighting each other. Thank you. As I said, now everybody's fighting each other. I want to bring it back together. Let's stop fighting each other and start bringing it back together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Did anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes. Thank you. Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Christine Timmons. I've been here about two and a half years now. And we moved here to get away from the awful leadership in Detroit. And I attended a ranked choice voting meeting that the city paid for, and I know about it. It never would have happened. We are very upset and we're very ashamed that this has been put online to make the nice city of East Point look like backwoods, racist. This is not true. We had Ms. Owen, I do believe she won without running. So why go ahead with this? I don't like it. I'm protesting. Like you said, you weren't going to start a disturbance. Well, I am, because I want to know the name of the person in the Department of Justice and the judge. They all know me, Christine Timmons. I write them letters. Ask them, why are you doing this? I call this abuse of authority from Ms. Owen, and I call it, I'm sorry, it's racial terrorism. Now, a lot of people scared. You know, I don't like that because I have to live on my merits. All the things I've done all my life, I don't use racism for any reason, but I heard two of the council members doing that, not members, the ones running. I have to tell both of them, you come to me, you better not, you can't use this because the Constitution doesn't allow it. Now, as you can plainly see, they're overriding the Constitution, but I'm a Constitutionist, and I'll tell you, I want this ranked choice stuff stopped. I think it's, I don't like, for one thing, it looks like the welfare. I sat through the entire, entire meeting, and they take other people's votes. Now, in a runout voting, it's different. You get to go back and vote. Here, you don't get a choice. They just take it and put it where they want. So your vote may not even count. I don't see how that's in line with the Constitution. So that's what I got to say tonight. I got to apologize to everybody because most of the African-Americans I talked to, they say they don't know why they did it. And we, we came here to get away from people like Kwame Nne. He's in jail for twenty-eight years. The school board, ten or fifteen of them in prison. You think I want to see a bunch of them again? That's why we came here, to get away from, we want a mix. Do it on your merits. I don't need no Department of Justice coming in.
Do you have thirty seconds?
And telling people, oh, if you don't vote for black people, oh, if you don't vote for Chinese people. Excuse me? The Constitution doesn't allow you to do that. So Christine Timmons, that's what I got to say. I'm running for Congress. Don't vote for my color. I know everything in the Constitution. Vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Would anyone else?
Yes, name's Larry Edwards, resident of East Point. I'd just like to commend intern manager, city manager of Mr. Cotton on the follow-up of keeping his word in regard to the last meeting that we had. And he kept his word, came to me and addressed it, and actually asked someone to come out and look at the issue that was at hand. And I think that was commendable, to find somebody that's honorable, that can keep their word and what have you. The person wasn't exactly in his expertise, in line of expertise, but it did lead into his expertise, which had another issue, which I had another issue about, which was the water situation here in East Point. And so I've got a lot more clarity and a lot more exact information and what have you, that I can feel comfortable with and feel relied, that I can rely on and what have you. So I just want to thank him for that.
Mr. Member Tim, I want to thank the D W department, especially Sheriff Abraham for making that possible, that follow-up.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to item four, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion for the regular meeting for August sixth?
Mr. Mayor Proton, I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Moved by Ms. Lucido, supported by Ms. Owens. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Feinfeldt?
Yes.
And Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
With the minutes approved, moving on to our scheduled hearings. We have a scheduled hearing regarding the Eight Mile Road Road Diet Project. And Mr. Pandoi, did you, I need this to the public here, but?
I have a real brief presentation for the public hearing, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Just real briefly, the city of East Point has received federal funding for the reconstruction of Old Eight Mile Road from Vernier to Petersfield in two thousand and twenty. When we started investigating this project, we looked at the possibility, or considering the possibility, of doing a road diet on this section of road. What that means is currently it's four lanes, two lanes in each direction. A road diet is considered in these situations when the total average daily traffic volume is fifteen thousand vehicles or less. And we did a, we did a traffic count, a traffic study on this road. We've got up fifteen hundred vehicles per day on this section of road. So it was a, it's a perfect example of a good place to use a road diet. In this particular case, we would reconstruct the road with three lanes, one lane in each direction and a center turn lane. It would reduce the overall footprint of the road by approximately eleven feet. That eleven foot that's currently paved and will become a green belt along the north side of the road. There's a depiction here in the drawing that shows the, what the road diet would look like, and it also shows the transition pieces, how the traffic will be transitioned coming from the west and also coming from the east. Coming from, coming from the east, from Harper Woods and St. Quay Shores, the right turn lane, if you're heading east, I'm sorry, if you're heading west, coming from the east, the right turn lane would then become a dedicated right turn lane. The current middle lane, if you want to call it that, that would go straight into the remainder of the road diet in the section of East Point. If you're transitioning from Vernier, there's two lanes that cross the median and enter into Old Eight Mile Road. Once you cross Vernier Road and you get into Old Eight Mile Road, then one of those lanes will taper off to a single lane heading, heading eastbound. The other thing that we're looking at doing is we're working with the individual businesses along that stretch to attempt, in an attempt to reduce the number of driver approaches. There is, there's several driver approaches that are in that section of roadway, and we'll be working one-on-one with each of the property owners to, in an attempt to eliminate as many of those driver approaches as we can. So with that, that's, that's all I have to offer.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak specifically on the Old Eight Mile Road Diet Plan that Mr. Pandoi just spoke about? All right, seeing none, that concludes our public hearing, and we'll move, there's no unfinished business, so we'll move on to reports from administration and begin with Mr. Feinfeldt.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I'd like to, I'd like to start with asking the Assistant City Manager and Deputy State Clerk to give you his reach report on ranked choice voting, which I've asked him to do every two weeks.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Proton Feinfeldt and council members. Last week, the clerk's office worked in conjunction with Mr. Pedro Hernandez and Ms. Grace Ramsey of Fairville to host two ranked choice voting implementation trainings. As you know, Wednesday's training was attended by East Point candidates, and Thursday's voter education seminar was attended by members of the public. I'm happy to report to you guys that both trainings seem to be very well received and informative, and there were a lot of really great questions asked by members of the public there. Pedro and Grace both did a fantastic job, and East Point City Attorney Richard Albright and our outside counsel are now working with, with her to try and bring her back in the future because we felt she just did a great job, and we look forward to having her work with us to further educate the citizens of East Point regarding ranked choice voting. My office did place an order for ballots for the upcoming November election. We decided to make a ballot order of one hundred percent of our registered voters here in the city of East Point. We are doing this in anticipation of a, an increase in potentially spoiled ballots. And as you know, if, if somebody's at the polls and they spoil their ballot, they will be given the opportunity, the machine, the DS two hundred, the voting tagulator, will spit that back out and ask them if they would like to either proceed with a potentially spoiled ballot, or they'll be given the opportunity to be issued a new ballot. So that is why we, we have made the decision to order a larger than normal ballot, place a larger than normal ballot order. Beyond that, we've got numerous meetings coming up with the State Bureau of Elections in Macomb County. But again, I'm happy to report that everything's going pretty well, and we don't see any major hiccups right now. September first is a big deadline for us since that's the day the logic and accuracy testing will be sent to the State Bureau of Elections. So after that, I'll be able to provide a more comprehensive report, but as of right now, all systems go. So thank you. And if any, if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Feinfeldt.
Thank you, Mr. Feinfeldt. I do want to also thank Natalie, who is here tonight. She's usually in the back room recording. Given some technical difficulties, we are attempting to improvise here and hopefully have those straightened out and IT gets on the job later. We want to announce a couple of things. In September through Friday, we got a notice that Vietnam Veterans in America is holding an issue of POW MIA twenty-four hour vigil. And I am struck by how many issue Vietnam veterans are still missing in action. I'll share that with, Ruth, they asked us to advise you. I have in front of me a D W report, and pretty much everything's on track, especially the flushing and greasing of fire hydrants. So far, we have very few complaints, and I want to thank the community for enduring what temporarily dirty water they may endure and just run the cold faucet. The economic development manager position is now being posted. Here's a copy of the posting. Wanted you to be aware of it. Anyone who's interested and able to bridge some of our public and private partnerships for economic development within the city of East Point is welcome to apply, and the pay range is fifty-four thousand to seventy-four thousand. Speaking of welcome to apply, the city manager's position is now posted by L H R. Here's the full profile that we, that you helped come up with. I'll just pass it around. It's in color, and it'll be online. You can see it. There are applications so far based on our ad, which we posted immediately after following last meeting, and this will not be attached to it, so we expect many more applicants. The, speaking of that, I'm sure Rich may be able to report on this, but the charter amendment was approved by the governor for all of that. So thank you, Rich. And the concrete work that you assisted reviewing last week, a lot two weeks ago, the next step is to have an amendment for additional concrete work. Now that that, those former prior years are resolved, thank you again to Director Abraham and also City Engineer Stephen Gory for assisting. It was a complicated process to, every, every member of you were part of that team. In the future, both the director and my honor, we hire an inspector that works closely with a roughly contractor, and then is involved in already double checking as we did before, but doing it in advance of the bill. So you'll be seeing that as part of his recommendation next, next council meeting. It's something I wanted you to know. I fully support, and I think it's a good use of resources. Speaking of doing work and public sector work, our alleys, one of them are in tough shape. We received a complaint on one just west of Grashit. We are going in, and I don't think this is the first time it's been done, but we are, it is a public problem. We are going to be cleaning it up, this D W director and his team. However, we don't think that's a good solution permanently, and we'd like to suggest instead that it be a property owner responsibility, adjacent commercial property owner responsibility. So we're bringing you an ordinance to consider on that at your next meeting or two. And City Attorney Rich Albright has helped draft that ordinance, says Mary Van Keren. Speaking of ordinances, our Director of Public Safety is ready to make some changes to the edible control ordinance, and that will be come forward probably in the next meeting as well. And my concluding note is, if you turn on W D I V channel four, we received a resident, Mrs. Paige Cole, who set account for an injury here about her chicken. The city council reviewed that ordinance at some point and approved, and it will air August twenty second. And it's either eight P M. or eight A M. It wasn't clear, so that's going to promote this individual and her chicken and the fact that you have admitted that in the city of East Point. Thank you.
Were there any questions? I have one thing I just wanted to mention. I had, I've given council a copy of the draft and ordinance of what we possibly do. I know we spoke about fundraising, and I'm just requesting you get with Mr. Albright, it may be Mr. Long if necessary, to see what our options are.
Yes.
And I didn't put up your agenda this night because it sounded like you had some other ideas that might be simpler to get them solved, we want.
Yes.
All right, and moving on to the final district.
Yes, Member Proton, council, I have nothing specific to report tonight, but if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, moving on to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Feinfeldt. I see that maybe some members in the audience that are here regarding the medical marijuana facilities ordinance that was initially scheduled to be on this evening's agenda. I received a call last week from Mr. Lentz, and there was a request that that, that agenda had to be moved to the next meeting, which will be the first meeting in September. So should have an opportunity to speak on that. I believe you should make us pose suggestions for changing the ordinance. So that is why the ordinance is not on this evening's agenda. So it will be on the agenda first meeting in September. That is all I have, Mayor Feinfeldt. I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a comment to Rich. What did you say about the marijuana? I did tell, ask Rich about, well, I got some information about a point system that Mass Hite used to approve laws and things like that for medical marijuana facilities. So I know I told Rich to do a point system before approving licenses, and I know I talked last week, two weeks ago, about giving, I'm thinking about giving more points to people who are, and who have been invested in East Point for a certain amount of time and also residents that didn't want points at all, who had not known them in East Point. So I can forward that information to you, because that's what Mass Hite did, that's for instance.
Mr. Albright, we might have to go back and check, but I thought we, we had our joint meeting with the planning commission. I thought at that time, we already had made a recommendation that administration would come up with the point system. I thought we, we all agree at that time that administration would come, already would be developing that. So we need to go back and look and see if that had already been recommended.
That very well. I don't have any specific recommendation on that, but.
Yeah, I, for some reason, I thought I remember that we decided we didn't want to deal, we thought we would take administration recommendations on that.
Thank you.
Boston, you all copy of what I have. That's, you know, who already did, testing every day, let's look at what other people aren't doing. And so just, you know, take these, let's want to have the ones who's devoted to us, and I'll forward that to you.
Right, and I, and I guess if that was the case of forwarding that to administration would probably be ideal also, if they're going to be the ones that all of the have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, item A, approval of the special event application could be back to school events. And Ms. Owens, do you want us to speak about this?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank council for approving the yoga event that was at Rain Park. It was, if you look in the back where you got your agenda, is some pictures of a lot of the residents that came out and participated in that event. That was really nice. And this back to school event will be held at Fairland Park. A lot of people don't even know that park exists. I've been getting a lot of calls and things like that. They actually thought it was kept through elementary park, but they actually believe it's actually East Point's park. And so I'm partnering up with a young lady named Kylie Washington, who has a foundation called Joy by Foundation, which specializes in helping adults and also going into schools to helping those who have disabled kids and things like that. And so she wanted to partner up with City of East Point. She has done a lot of work with kids, with parents who have kids with disabilities. And so you probably see her come up here for C P G funds later on this year. But she has did some things for East Point. Prior to this event, she's also thinking about moving here, her and her family as well, to provide more services to the city of East Point. And so I thought it was a good partnership to do something with her. Also with Epic Entertainment, they are also a vendor for East Point Roseville Recreation. And so they will be providing a lot of the things that they provide for all of our events. So I just thought it was a good look for East Point to do something for the community as a whole. It's not my event. It's actually the foundation's event. It's adding me to it. Sometimes we add a elected official to the event. It's sometimes lost more people. And so I'm just glad to be a part of this event, but I feel like that event is part of East Point as a whole. And so when this is approved, I just don't want to think, people just think that this is an event for council alone. This is an event that all the council wants to do. And so at this event, we'll be giving out free backpacks, hygiene kits. We'll be serving the community food and things like that. A lot of time, like last year, I did, because with the council, we gave out free backpacks and things like that. This year, we're going to do additions to that, but we also going to do hygiene kits. A lot of kids going to have clean socks and hygiene, and their appearance is very important to them. So we want to take care of that. We're going to have different resources. Care that does a lot of things in our community in East Point will be there. The four H will be there. Code Scouts of East Point will be there. So we have a lot of different resources that support East Point as a whole, that will be there to support this event as well. And so hopefully everyone can come out and support these children that's in our own community and surrounding communities. A lot of other cities are, does this for their community. I see Councilman Dempson, a lot of council people do this for their cities. Not nothing brand new that I'm doing, which is something I think is, will be helpful for the community. So that's just giving you a summary of pretty much what this whole backpack event, back to school we managed for. And they also, I'm sorry, they also be getting for their stuff that they're doing, too. So these kids be totally ready for school. They're backpacks, hygiene kits. So be getting ready for school. And there will be also a fashion show there to teach kids what to wear, what not to wear. So we're just helping the community out with, you know, a different look for the school and just pretty much, you know, providing resources to the community. Hopefully we can do this each and every year.
I just have one question for myself. First of all, did you talk to something about the restroom or something?
I did talk to the superintendent. When I did call that the maintenance person who does it, they were on vacation. So Santa Rosa do a lot of stuff. People are on vacation in summertime. But the rare Tony, we can't see, I talked to him, he said he would have a bathroom there. Since, and again, I know sooner or later, I'm going to come back to council about providing bathrooms for the parks that people are paying for, and then I'm getting the same, maybe that other parks have, like bathrooms, electricity, water, and all those things. Because the person who is doing this, how to wash, that has to pay for the bathrooms. If Tony, we can't see, doesn't come through it, we have to pay for that. We have to pay for a generator to get these kids here hooked and things like that. So it's coming, I don't think it's fair that they have to pay for something that everybody else get up, different parks. So maybe sometimes soon, we can think about getting that. So maybe sometime soon we can think about getting bathrooms at the parks that will soon be used, obviously. Same way you want the parks.
Right, they might be a good thing to bring to Parks Commission, I was just going to say.
Yeah.
So because I mean, there's a lot of things in our parks that need to be done, so for sure they would enjoy that. We hear your ideas. So I think the only other question I had really quick was, I'm assuming that there's nothing going on at the school that day, so you're going to be using the South Lake water parking?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor Proton, I motion to approve the special event application for a back to school event on August thirty first, twenty nineteen at Fairlane Park from noon to five PM.
Sir's support?
I'll support.
All right, move by Ms. Lucino, supported by Mr. Monaco, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes, motion passes, moving on to item B, approval of the installation of the AstroTurf tee pads and signs at the Spinner Park Disc Golf Course. And I believe you have someone to speak on it.
Yes, I have a proposal, my name is Brandon Livingston. Myself and two others have already completed phase one of this project, which is installing the baskets at Spinner Park for the disc golf course. We are seeking approval to move on to phase two, which would be installing signage and tee pads for the disc golf course. We are going to be doing this, or funding this by sponsorships. So each hole will have a tee sign at the front of the pad that will give information on the hole, how the player is supposed to play the hole, as well as have a picture of who sponsored the hole. That's how we plan on funding this, this proposal. As of now, we need twelve AstroTurf tee pads to complete the disc golf course, as well as twenty-four tee signs. And as of now, we have a course map at the front of the park, ready to be installed. I talked with Joe Marucci and he said he already has a sign ready to go, but I have a map already made. So as of now, I'm just seeking approval to move on to phase two. We're not asking for any funding at this time.
Mr. Mayor Proton, I motion to approve the request presented by Brandon Livingston to install AstroTurf tee pads at twelve holes at Spinner Park Disc Golf Course, in accordance with the letter D of July twenty ninth, twenty nineteen.
Sir's support?
Yeah, support. That I'd just like to, well, first of all, thank you. I think this is awesome that you've done all this work and are coming forward. I would just recommend that we just, about the signs, I know I'm here just to work with administration to make sure they're reasonable or whatnot. I don't think we need like specifics in here, but just work with them on that, just so that they're, they're happy with them.
Make sure it's consistent with what's already against the park.
Yeah.
And stick out.
If Ms. Lucino, yeah, doesn't amend.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to have administration approve the signs before.
All right, thank you. Linda, is that motion clear?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Lucino, supported by Mr. Monaco, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes.
And Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, the big one regarding the citywide contract for electrical repairs and maintenance. And I don't know if any of you wanted to speak on this, Mr. Cardt Cotton or Mr. Abraham or council.
Mr. Abraham, could you, Sharon, could you, it was a short reading?
Good evening, Mayor Proton, Councilmember Baysa and Joseph Abraham, Director of Department of Public Safety Services. On June sixth of two thousand nineteen, we issued an RFP, it is a request of our proposal to solicit proposals from qualified contractors to provide repairs and maintenance or electrical repairs and maintenance for various municipal buildings. As of now, we do not have a contract. As and when we need service, we call one of the contractors here and then they come and do the repairs and then we pay their bills and then at times when it goes above five thousand, we come to you for approval. And then I thought it was a proper procedure to have an approved contractor place, approved by the owner of the body and then a fully vetted system and then a publicly bid contract. And then my plan was to have multiple contractors on board so that as and when there is a need for an electrical repair for any of our buildings, my plan was to get a quote from each contractor and then whoever bids the loudest, give the, give the work to that particular contractor. Unfortunately, if you receive one bid and then that is a contractor by name Skyline Electric. It is only a mile from this facility. He is an East Pointer, East Pointer. They have been doing business in city of East Point for the last twenty-five years. They have seventeen full-time employees and then fifteen vehicles and then two area trucks. And then we have been using them at times and then our staff are very pleased with their service. So I request this owner of the body to approve this contract. So we have an approved electrical contractor for providing service to our municipal buildings. Thank you.
Did any council members have any questions?
I'm happy that the business is located in East Point. Usually I wouldn't like it, there's just one, one person that put in a bid, you know, a company, I should say, but these rates seem pretty reasonable to me too, I'm not a electrical expert, but they seem pretty reasonable to me, so.
Is our motion?
Mayor Proton, I motion to award the bid to citywide electrical repairs and maintenance to Skyline Electrical of two-two-seven-five-five Kelly Road, East Point, Michigan, four-eight-zero-two-one at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Support. Move by Lucino, supported by DeMonico, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes.
And Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Moving on to item D, approval, approve, approval of the mileage amendment to the agreement with Gov. Tams USA. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, Madam Mayor Proton, Mr. Mayor Proton, sorry. I motion to amend the employee leasing agreement with Gov. Tams USA to increase the mileage reimbursement by amending a civic fee to signify a three-hundred-two-dollar-six cents of mileage reimbursement per trip effective from the beginning of the agreement on July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Sir's support?
For.
Move by Lucino, supported by Owens, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes.
And Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving on to payroll and bills, can I get a motion?
Mayor Proton, I want a motion to pay the bills in the amount of two million six hundred twelve thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars eighty-four cents.
Move by DeMonico, supported by Owens, did anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes.
And Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
Motion passes, moving on to hearing of the public, would anyone wish to be heard?
Thank you once again, my name is Christine Tummel, new resident of East Point. I'm just trying to contribute to my new society. Well, I heard what the city manager said about it was well-received. Let me explain, ninety percent of the people just kind of like didn't like it. And they did receive it well because they asked some really pertinent questions about it. That's what he really meant. And what I, as I said, I was the one who was raising the most sand. I felt like it was my duty to raise sand as a member of the African-American community, seeing something done that really is not needed. Do you know we haven't had any real racism in this country in about sixty years? What's happening right now, and I don't want to make anybody mad, anybody mad, but the Democrats are orchestrating this. Look, it's all over the country. They got a squad doing it. They got people fighting each other all over the country. Every one of the Democrat African-American leaders is helping to push it. And I talk to them every day, they know when Christine Tummel called in DC because your name comes up there. Now, oh my God, it's Christine Tummel. And they have to listen to it because they're elected. And I say to you, that's why you guys have heard me say right here this podium, I'm warning white people, do not go in there and vote for Democrats this time. Not because I don't like them, they just wrong this time. They're wrong. You shouldn't be spreading all this racial such and such at a time where we've been living without it. All of a sudden, in the last eight months, since the Democrat congressman there, the white people on the street run.
Yes, Stephen.
It's ridiculous.
I'm just going to interrupt you, we are nonpartisan, but.
Oh, I know, I know. We're speaking about what they're actually doing now, not about their party. This is not.
Hold on, hold on a moment, just please address the council on city issues.
Well, it is a city issue, what just happened?
And you can continue.
Okay, dear, I understand what you mean though, I really do. And I'm not mad at you, I'm voting for you. So anyway, you know, to finish what I'm saying, I understand what he's saying. But this is, this affecting everybody, everybody's affected by this. And so I warned you already and you said for yourself, and I've had the candidates to come up to me. I couldn't believe, and start racial talking. And I tell you, you can't do that, and you know, I'll say who it is, but she's a candidate, Ms. Gladman, she's a candidate, fair game. And I told her, do not do this with me. You can't, I'm a constitutionalist, it doesn't allow you to say, I don't care who you are, the Libertarian, Republican, Democrat, it don't matter, the Constitution does not allow you to say anything but citizen, if you are an elected official.
Do you have thirty seconds?
Thank you, darling. But citizens, that's all you can say. And rest of this mess, I'm not going to tolerate it. I Google Christine Tummel, you Google these other women, then you're not going to find but maybe one page. You have to Google, hit the bottom where it says more results, you'll do it twenty-five times. I've been off through all the courts, I win on the Supreme Court level all the time. So I'm not going to tolerate it and that's what I got to say, I don't like race choice voting, I think it's discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Rich?
Well, I guess I'm just going to start the easy way. Getting back to the parks, as I said, I do not understand, considering more or less the new community. Like I said, it was real simple, new community programs headed these Detroit parks. We've even got old, straight down. I'm just going to say right now, let's go, we've got eight shuffleboard courts and I'm still fighting to get the equipment in back and for them right now. As I said, I've got Tony to buy some and we finally bought some. We've got signs out on some of them, we've got equipment out on some of them, reverting. We've got people that want, and we have other people who don't want to sign them. I, I don't understand a lot of this stuff anymore. We're going to have to get, and make somebody responsible. You know, I mean, we got all this stuff going, everybody said, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this. Let's just get back to very basic facts, get back to our parks that we used to have. Get back where we had attendance, get back where we had equipment. And I said, and I know the best one is, when they cleaned out Spinner to redo it, what happened? Now, some of you people with it, what happened to the equipment that was at Spinner? Out in the garden, didn't it? I asked, they said it was over, you know, Parks and Recreation Building, I can't even get close to that building. They don't want me anywhere around that building, but that's where it was supposed to go. Bodyguards, horseshoes, all the educational equipment, all the stuff that was in that, in that building, where'd it go? I asked real simple, basic questions. All the stuff that we have before, did somebody just decide to go throw it out? There's, there's people, I don't understand this anymore. Is, there's people here that should be watching basic things, but yet they're not. We can't afford to keep doing business the way we're doing business. We're just letting it go. I mean, if you're not going to turn your back, but if it doesn't directly involve you, then, well, we'll buy some more. Then when I come up and I ask for it, we don't have the money. Well, just little typical example, I just throw this one out actually. Right here, it's got top trash cans for the parks.
Do you have thirty seconds?
Six thousand two hundred dollars. How come we're up and down a ratio? How come these cans that were supposed to be bought for the parks, we're up and down a ratio? As I said, people, please, I'm not denying it or the same thing about it, but the things that are happening right now shouldn't have happened though. As I said, a lot of things shouldn't have happened last time around, but everybody closed their, closed their eyes. They just didn't open their mouth. It's time this city starts a little bit of a change and see what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Thank you, seemed like the same three. Name Larry Edwards, East Point resident. I just have some concerns in regard to the business that was at hand here. I've already mentioned about inspectors for the upcoming work that will be done, I guess in regards especially to the palm tree. And I would just like to know what happened to it, why wasn't it, at one time it was. So what happened to that, because this time around, there was no inspectors and the work was shattered. And that's the reason why Mr. Cotton had to get with somebody and have them come and check the work that was done in my place. And in regard to Fairlane Park, if it was mentioned or stated, I didn't hear, but how is the information being relayed, being relayed to the residents for the park event? As well as in regard to Mr. Abraham, I said he was and what have you, being in regard to the lowest bidder and what have you. The lowest bidder is not always the best person for the job. And when, and is the bid over? Or is there still time or it ran out for it to just be given to one person or considered for one person and what have you? I mean, these are things we don't have, we don't hear, you may have, I don't have and what have you, so, but I need to hear them and what have you. You know, I'm not one to like to be left in the dark and what have you, just on decisions. Because we make a lot of decisions and whatever, you run through a lot of yeses and yeses and yeses and what have you. Sometimes don't even have all the information or the correct information. You can't make a, you can't make a, a good judgment or a good decision about anything if you don't have all the facts. It's going to be, it's going to be messed up and what have you, so these are some, just some of the concerns I'm yet to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the second hearing will probably be closed and we'll move on to Mayor Council reports and Ms. Lucino?
First, I'd like to ask everyone, if they have not done so yet, to go online on Rare's website, which is the Roseville and East Point Recreation website. And there is a survey on there that the parks that Rare is doing, that they want, they're working on a master plan for the parks and they want your input and your suggestions on what you want to see in your parks in the city. So I think it's really important, this is giving you a chance to have your voice heard on what you want to see and what you think is most important than our parks have. So if you could do that, we have until September first, so the time is kind of running out. So if you haven't yet, if you can't have a computer at home, the library has some and there's also paper applications at the Rare Building, which is located in Roseville. Secondly, I just want to make sure everyone is aware that on September eighteenth, the AK Homewards Association is having their meeting and they will have also meet the candidate night. I encourage everyone to come out and see all the candidates that are running this year. We do have five for mayor and four for running for city council. So this will be an opportunity to come out, hear from them, afterwards ask some questions and anything like that. Lastly, in regards to the parks, the event that we approved tonight and the other two events that Ms. Owens is planning, those are not city-sponsored events, those are events that are. that are coming from people who want to do these events in the city, and we can't deny someone the fact that they want a whole event at one of our parks because we don't have shuffleboard equipment. Um, I understand, because I am on the Parks Committee and I work diligently, and they have been working diligently, to go through our parks, see what our parks need, and try to prioritize what is most important that needs to be done in our parks. There's a lot of work in our parks that needs to be done, I think everyone realizes that. The city did not have the money to put into the parks, this last budget, we did approve some money for the parks, and we're gonna start doing these projects, it's a ti, it's a, it takes a long time, and I understand that, it doesn't seem like anything is getting done, but the Parks Commission has been working on going forward with coming up with these recommendations that will be being made, council, in the future. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco?
Thanks, Mr. Kleinfeld, um, first like to uh thank you again, Brian, for everything with ranked choice voting, uh, I thought our events went really well, the candidate event and the public event, if you weren't able to make it out to the public event, we will do more, and uh we'll let you know when those will be. Like to point out for that, that ranked choice voting used to be called instant runoff or a similar name like that, eh, um, in regards to the comments that were at the public hearing today, essentially, it just, you don't have to vote twice then, you just vote all of your ranks in order once, and it's essentially a primary in general combined, you don't have to come back and vote again, uh, some cities, uh, not in Michigan, um, if someone doesn't get a majority of the vote, um, they'll have another election after that, like a month later, so then someone does win a majority of the vote, essentially ranked choice voting reduces that, you don't have to have two elections, your votes aren't just getting handed out to whoever, it is your vote, the, whoever you vote for is getting your vote, there's no, I don't know, random or anything that had been mentioned during hearing in the public. Also, uh, I'd like to address the comment uh in front of the young lady hearing the public about there being no racism in the country, I would strongly disagree, I assume she was referring to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, saying it's been sixty years without racism in the country, I mean, I wish that was true, but that is absolutely not true, and the country is working like it can, but uh there's definitely still uh racism that needs to be addressed throughout the country, and. Next, uh, a brighter note, uh, my neighbors, Mike and Lauren, like this, uh, give them a shout out, there was a kid down the street that uh his bike tire was broken, and uh they had a bike, I think they weren't using, so they, they gave the kid their bike and he's riding it up and down the street, uh, every day now, and I saw him outside doing that, so that, that was a really cool thing for him to do. And I'd like to say congratulations uh to our county commissioner, Brian Kleinfeld, becoming president of the Michigan Association of Counties. And I'd also like to invite everyone out to the slow roll that will start at Eastland Mall at six o'clock on Monday, feel like riding your bike, uh, coming out, some people rollerblade too, I might do that option, and uh, come on out, Eastland Mall, six P M. on Monday, and uh, that was all, Mr. Proton.
Sir, would you please address that ten percent at the top, because the way they explained it to us, yeah.
Uh, Ms.
I'm kinda, I, or, but he should explain the whole thing.
Um, you're, you're finished, right? Thank you, if you wanna speak to him, you can talk to him at the meeting, uh, Ms. Owens?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Proton. First, I would like to thank everybody for coming out, and um, I wanna say thanks to Ms. Akila Muhammad for doing yoga in the park at Rain Park, um, it was well attended, people are asking her, was asking her to come back, uh, she did some, she actually was trained in Thailand, and um, she came to East Point and did it um as a donation to the community, um, and I give a lot of people, you know, their respect for bringing something to a community and not wanting to get paid, they just wanna see it grow, and, you know, and that's her livelihood, she just wanted to bring something different. And also to Kylie Washington for wanting to do the back to school event, and anybody that wants to bring something to the community and wants to work with any elected official in doing that, um, without getting paid and using their own money to, for amenities and paying for the park, that speaks volumes, because they can do it in any other city than East Point. Um, so, I wanna thank those people, and Mr. Creach, just wanna address a, a couple things you said about, you know, some of the things that have not been done, I think um, the Parks Commission came back and a lot of things Mr. Cotton worked on because of some of the things you pointed out, and I think we came a long way, and um, even with the new events, whether they're new or old, we're moving forward, so I think that's a good, just good in general. And also, um, I don't know, the last person's uh comment was saying how was the back to school event, um, you know, notified for residents, well, the CNG newspaper did an awesome job last week notifying all residents about all the events in the park, including the back to school, it's been on Facebook, we passed out flyers for the event to the residents, um, at the big event that every year Kelly Middle School gives, which is always over five hundred residents, and um, kids that go to the school, so flyers, newspaper, Facebook, and also, they will also um be given to the, the information we give to the superintendent of schools like it was last year, so I think that's a lot being done for advertisement, um, so to speak. And so, um, going forward, the back to school event will be next Saturday, August thirty-first, from twelve to four, um, hopefully it'll be well attended, uh, attended by everybody in here to come out and see what we're doing, and the new ideas that people are bringing to East Point, and also we can add those new ideas to some of the new ideas that we're talking about, I just feel like um, East Point is going forward and in a positive way. And so, um, that being said, I wanna thank the council for approving the things with the parks, and um, things, new ideas is where we headed at East Point, so, thank you.
Thank you, uh, speaking of events, the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission is planning a community event on Saturday, September twenty-first, uh, they're planning a Shamrock Day, which will go from eleven A M. to three P M. um, in the Children's Garden, they'll have uh games, chalk art, yarn weaving, crafts, community art, and some other things, are still working out some of the details, uh, but mark September twenty-first for that event. And um, I also wanna say congratulations to our commissioner, who sworn yesterday as the president of the Michigan Association of Counties. I'm very proud of her and how she's represented our community, and it's, it's really great for McCombe to have uh those positions at MAC, because they're involved in setting the policies that they're going to lobby to the state, so um, I got the opportunity to go up to the conference and see uh, Ron Kleinfeld, my mom's career, and it was nice and it was also very interesting to see how they put their policy agendas together, and I, I think she's really representing McCombe well. And that's all I have, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The both?
The four.
Moved by Carter, supported by Ms. Owens, please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucino?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Kleinfeld?
Yes.